It's gonna be worse than the last one. This one, you don't have to have.
Well, yes, well, it sure is. If everyone would stand before we call a meeting to order and have a pledge to the flag, I would like to not remind everybody, because I know everybody knows yesterday was Memorial Day. So I would, in lieu of opening prayer today, I'd like us to have a silent prayer for the men and women that have gone before and fought for our country and died fighting for our freedoms. So if we would bow our head in a moment of silent prayer, then we'll have a pledge.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming today. We have the first item on the agenda, it's a consent agenda, and then we will swear in the new elected officials. So if everyone's had a chance to read the minutes of the last meeting, I will make a motion to approve of that motion. The second by is Commissioner Langston. There is one correction. I would like everyone to look at page two at the bottom where it says July 4th of events. Commissioner Hoffman did not second that motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Ashbrook, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Shaw? So the motion was made by Commissioner Langston, seconded by Commissioner Ashbrook. I couldn't see Commissioner Hoffman making a second and voting against it at the same time.
I don't know, I might be able to, but I didn't do it this time.
It has been so noted in the minutes that you'll be signing today the correction.
All right, okay. So there's a motion, seconded by Commissioner Langston. All in favor, aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes five oh. Now we will have a swearing in of our new official commissioners. And that'd be myself, Commissioner Ashbrook, and Commissioner Langston. Before we go forward with that, I'd like to give a word of thanks to Judge Tim McFarland. He always is very nice to take his time and come out here and help us out in the swearing process. So Judge, we really appreciate you doing that for us, even though you don't eat any of our refreshments or anything. Please, please take some home with you. Everyone take some home. We've got, we've got a lot out there. So if that's it, we'll go ahead with swearing ceremony and let Judge McFarland take charge.
All right. Mr. Mayor, would you like to be first today, sir?
I can, or...
Come on down, you're the first candidate.
Okay.
Everybody gets a two-year sentence today.
I asked my wife Nancy to come forward. My sister Barbara Terry and her husband Jim.
Want to do this up here so we can get pictures? Does Nancy have the bio?
Which way you want it?
If you would, please raise your right hand. Aye, Commissioner Mayor Rex Pizette.
Aye, Commissioner Mayor Rex Pizette.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The state of Florida and Gulf County, Florida.
The state of Florida and Gulf County, Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
I'm duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of Mayor Commissioner for the city of Port St. Joe.
Of Mayor Commissioner of the city of Port St. Joe.
Of which I'm now about to enter.
Of which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Can you get a picture? This one here? Okay. Mr. Langston? And we have some of the Bible today, Mr. Langston.
I have one.
Yes, sir, there we go. Awesome. Can we get somebody to hold the Bible, please? Thank you, sir. Stand right here, please. All right. Left hand on the Bible, please, and raise your right hand. Aye, Commissioner Eric Langston.
Aye, Commissioner Eric Langston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Florida.
The state of Florida.
And Gulf County, Florida.
And Gulf County, Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of Commissioner of the city of Port St. Joe.
Of Commissioner of the city of Port St. Joe.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner Langston. Mr. Ashbrook?
But ask my wife, Joe, wouldn't you come up and join me? Crowd gets smaller every year.
Thank you, Mr. George, for being here today. All right, if you would, please raise your right hand. Aye, Commissioner David Ashbrook.
Aye, Commissioner David Ashbrook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The state of Florida.
The state of Florida.
And Gulf County, Florida.
And Gulf County, Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
The City Commissioner for the city of Port St. Joe.
The City Commissioner for the city of Port St. Joe.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Ashbrook again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. I'd like to give you guys a chance to say how you want to before we get into the meat of the minutes. And after that, I'll call a five-minute recess for anybody that doesn't want to sit through our meeting. Sometimes they can be exciting, sometimes they can be pretty boring. So we'll give you a chance. But anyway, I want to, of course, thank my wife and my family for their support. The citizens of the city who've been very supportive of what we're doing and the direction we're heading. I'm energized and excited about what we've got going on. We've got a lot going on for the next two years and maybe beyond them. But I think the folks in the city will be pleased with what we've got going on. Some things you can see, some things you can't see. But we've got a lot working and with the help of everybody's support, it sure makes it a lot easier. So thanks again.
You mind? Mayor, I'm second what you just said. There's a lot happening. It's a great time to be Commissioner, and we appreciate the trust that you put in this board. We don't always agree, but we always get the job done. And like I said, great time. We've got federal funds, state funds. Storm has brought in a windfall of money. So we are, we're getting some things done. Our whole capital improvement plan list, our five-year list, I think, has been short for a couple of years now. We should be able to get it all done. So I...
I'd like to thank my family and friends and citizens of Port St. Joe for trusting us. I thank you for giving us an opportunity to try to make, try to do what's best for the city as a whole. And I enjoy working with the commissioning that we have here. And I think we do a good job. I think that we may have some complaints, but we all come out to it in agreement somehow. And I'm proud to be the president of the city of Port St. Joe.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll have a five-minute recess. Let's get started back. And we'll get into the agenda. I'm gonna move a couple of things around under new business, movies in the park. We have Jared Horton and Lisa. Anyway, here to discuss the project. And after them, I'll have our city engineer, Josh Backsley, do his report. So ladies, would you like to come forward? What happened to you, old? Okay, in your agenda packet on page 29, you have a request from these ladies to have movies in the park. So ladies, if y'all would like to explain what you want to do, and then we'll, we can talk about it.
So we had, we had the idea of...
Excuse me, one minute. You need to state your name and then sign it. Miss Charlotte, get off of me.
I don't want that.
Okay.
Jared Horton, Lisa Florian.
Is that microphone on? There you go.
Jared Horton, Lisa Florian. And use the new sign-in.
Not right now, when you finish.
So we had an idea to do movies in the park. We've done it a couple of times over the past 10 years, and it turns into a really good event. And so we wanted to do it in order to just have an event in downtown. It's outside, it'll be in the evening, so I think it'll be a really good event. Lisa had the idea of bringing the TBC and the Chamber in on it, and that way we can get a lot of good publicity out of it. It's open to the public. And then, of course, we're, just for the financial piece of it, we wanted to take up a donation for insurance. And so we're gonna try to keep it around $2 a person. But it would be a donation, and then that would go back to a nonprofit in Gulf County.
Yes, and just so you know, the movies are kid-friendly. You know, we're making sure it's a good priority for the entire family, so adults can come, kids can play. The idea would be great, you know, since we are so golf cart friendly in this area. You could just pull your golf cart up. You don't have to worry about, you know, people worried about COVID. At the time, they were when we were talking about it. This way, we have plenty of space, and everybody can just drive up and watch. To me, having little ones, it's great to let them run around. And, you know, the husband and wife sits there, relax, and enjoy it as well.
And then the only thing that I mentioned is that we wanted to run it for about 10 weeks. We originally wanted to start it tonight, but obviously that's not gonna happen. So we started next week. It would be every Tuesday, and we wouldn't start until around sunset, so 7:30, 8:00, and then we'd run it until the movie's over. Everything will be tore down and then put back up the following Tuesday, so there won't be anything left out here all the week. We will cover event insurance, as well as add the city on as additionally insured to that. And then we are gonna offer concessions. We went back and forth about that a little bit, about whether we should or whether we shouldn't. But with, we didn't want any parents or potentially teenagers trying to cross the street to get to Reed Avenue to get refreshments. So we will offer refreshments there on that.
Good, okay. Questions? Yeah, I've got two questions. One question is, if a child comes or a kid is able to come, it's might be 13-years-old or something, doesn't have money, can they still come?
Yes, yes. So it's donations, so it's just kind of like a, like anything else. We're gonna recommend that they pay $2, that nobody would be turned away.
Sure, yeah. And then trash, I assume we'll provide some trash cans down there for them? Can we, can we do that? Three or four trash cans? And so make sure there's somewhere close to put the trash in and finish that thing.
And then I think the other thing that we need access to, we just need the electricity to hook the everything up.
Yeah, the electrician was supposed to check that out. So I didn't get a call saying that there were problems, so it should be good to go.
Chief has a question.
Somebody would have to open the gate, you know, with that, the way you go, there's no motorized people.
No, they're using the wooded area right behind Goodwill.
I thought it was in the park.
Uh-huh, it's so...
I retract my statement.
There you go. Stay with us. There you go. Okay, any other questions?
I think, I think my only concern was the entry, but, charge, entry, but you're gonna donate it back to a nonprofit organization, so I'm happy if you have my word.
I think it's a good idea. My question, what you got? It's concession.
So we are gonna have popcorn and chips. Yeah, it'll be the typical, yeah, and peanut bars, snow cones, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Unless you're volunteering to come cook.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request.
Hosted, approved, second.
Okay, Commissioner Lowery, second by Commissioner Hoffman. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. At the same time, motion passed five oh. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, we're gonna get Mr. Josh to come up and give us an update on everything that's going on with the engineer. Thank you, Lisa.
Sell my house.
All right, Josh, doing well?
Stormwater management plan, last update, we had a call on 5/20 with Water Management District. And basically, they spoke with us about potential developed project scopes in the downtown basin to utilize the funding from the other project, which was, you know, in the $700,000 range. And basically, kind of their direction was to get with the council and, you know, discuss if there were potential projects. So I think that's the next step. But that's a, it seems like a very simple answer, but it's a pretty complex answer to, you know, a lot of questions of what those projects may be. Because the recommendations in the downtown basin were to use some backflow preventers and potentially some baffle boxes, which we've had discussions with baffle boxes on the other project, because the objective is not just to prevent floodwater, but also to address water quality. So you have real estate concerns. There's a lot of things that have to be vetted out for us to be able to actually try to utilize those stories. So I think...
Go ahead, Josh.
No, it, it, basically where we're at, and, you know, Jim can interject, but I think we're to the point, you know, where we need to sit down and discuss, you know, hey, here are some areas that we might want to look at, and we could start chasing costs, you know, or do we have the real estate to do these things that we're talking about doing? There's a lot of things that have to be vetted from here, you know, to move forward with spending.
Yeah, and as long as we got the Gulf County Canal emptying out in the bay, I think mitigation from stormwater in the city with baffle boxes, I think that's something we'll have to keep up with and maintain through the years. I'm not for that. I will throw this out, and this hadn't even been discussed, I don't think. Paton Bio has got to be a real problem, especially since the bridge construction, they restricted the flow from Paton Bio, and it's got some areas that have never been there before. And it's, it's a great place to let water settle out somewhat from the upland areas before it hits the bay. That's a big project. It's more than $700,000, I know. But I'd like to throw that out to them, because if they really want to help us, that might be, might be a good spot. Just, just a thought.
Or Jim, John, and myself can get together, and we can discuss some options and just try to propose to them, you know, what we're thinking and see, see what their direction is.
Yeah, yeah. More than open, I know you are too, to any other ideas that anybody sitting up here has got. That'll help our bay, because you just know about sending boats out there. There's a lot of people that use it, would want to keep it clean. But once again, it's showing you that they'll award you a grant, but if you don't use it, they don't know how to take it back. They don't know what to do now that we told them we didn't want to use it down at Ten Street. So anyway, that's my suggestion, and see what, see what they say. Just be a minor dredging, or at least a study.
Right, and I think the study may be the way to go. That, the, the issue, in my opinion, on where we're at as far as identifying a project, we had a project identified, and they didn't want to use the funding to do the project that we wanted. Then we had funding to do a study, but that study's a 50,000-foot view, but they're wanting to identify a project that's a 10,000-foot view from a study that we did at a 50,000-foot view. And it's hard to bridge that gap from 50,000 down to 10,000 and identify this, you know, what we're going to do. So we can get together and discuss, you know, where to go from there.
All right, thanks, sir.
Port City Trail, you know, the last time we talked, the trail structure, construction is complete. And the last update that I was leaving the county with the lighting is scheduled to be installed in the weekend, six, seven, which is next week. So I don't know how quick that is. I don't know much about the lighting installation. I can't imagine that it would be that long. So once that's done, we should be able to close that out. CPT Sewer, Avenue D is complete, and Avenue C is scheduled to start this week. So I'm assuming that they're remobilizing. So my assumption is that they'll either start this afternoon, probably tomorrow morning, more than likely, on bus, or bursting on soon.
Do you have a session to finish this long?
I'm assuming they're remobilizing from the holidays.
Any surprises on D that's been completed?
John, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things, I guess. Surprise that, you know, this was our first kind of go-around with the pipe works in that project. And, you know, when the pits were dug up and the pipe began to travel down the existing clay, what we saw was the roadway actually start climbing where that pipe was going to prove. Only at shallow depths, but nonetheless, did do that. I don't know the exact cause, or a few things, I don't know why it did that. But to some degree, I do believe, you know, when they laid the original sewer, they planned that way. So you literally got two-inch boards, you know, under every stick of pipe that we have in the city. And, you know, the theory is when that pipe was pulled at a shallow depth, it had nowhere to go. It couldn't be advanced, so it would not. So, you know, there are some really issues.
Appurts. Anyway, we're gonna be able to fix it down the road, though. I mean, you won't dig the road up, you're still without a pipe pumped up there, so.
We'll go with the direction of the mill down, really going down.
Your city, your city's got that, you know, project to do something in that nature. But being able to keep it so open as you're driving. Something that we didn't, didn't, you would never think it would happen, is going to improve.
I'm not sure the contractor have earned a lot on that first stretch, too, so that'll be good.
They learned the soils in Florida, but they're gonna soil it out.
Okay. All right, what's next?
Long Avenue, Sewer and First Street. I think we're still waiting on performance payment bond from the contractors. Once that's reviewed, then there will be the notes of proceeds paid for that job. So I don't have a start date for that yet, but once we get those, and it should be any time now, if we get those back from the contract, we should be issuing the notes. So I think everything from SRF is clear.
We sent everything into SRF, yes. Well, I think we have another meeting scheduled, I believe, with Philip, I think so, this week.
It's like a pre-construction meeting, I believe.
Seems like a first meeting in May or a meeting in April. We're at a 60-day waiting on all this to happen. So maybe I'm assuming in 30 days, we might be able to get going?
I would think so, with a pre-construction meeting, maybe quicker than that. Most of the holdup has been SRF that hasn't been on our side. We can send paperwork in and just patiently wait.
Mayor, what you gonna see, too, is materials. I've got a feeling probably Thursday, our meeting's gonna be about discussion about getting materials ordered up and seeing what kind of timeframe we get.
Okay, all right. All right.
And then the gazebo, it's in design, and we should be scheduled to be completed by 6:18 and ready for meeting.
Yeah, I'm anxious to see.
Setting a completion date.
See that design. I guess you provide that and all those through the box or...
I would, I'd like you guys to review it before we begin.
Absolutely, yeah, I would, too. Yeah. We need, we're gonna need an elevator to get up to it or what? You know, that's what's scary about the things at that park down there. All right, Josh, any other questions?
I have one question. When you mentioned the lighting of the trail, what part of the walking trail are you talking about? The lights are about to go up on? The lights are on the portion that's already paved, coming from 71 through this way. The stakes are out there. I don't have the exact locations, but the lighting is all on that portion.
71 to 21st Street, right?
Okay, so it will include that area going towards the elementary school off of 20th Street? I'm assuming that it does.
It does, it does.
Okay. He and I will go verify this. I just know we've talked about that block or two-block area for three years now.
Yep, we sure are.
Supposedly next week's what we need to...
That's good to hear, thank you.
And we're jumping around a little bit here, but not under old business. There's a Clifford Sims Park, bullet item. Will that involve Josh and anybody? Because I know we've talked about, I know we've talked about the fishing pier and all that. And so if you guys want to discuss that, we'll, we'll jump over to that.
Yeah, I actually am, was the one that asked to put that on there. I rode down there and looked at the, the, the area the other day. And just in a few minutes, I identified that the gazebo down there, at the very end of the turnaround, it has damage that hasn't been looked at or fixed. It's kind of caving in in the middle. So we need to either fix it or replace it or tear it down. And then the lighting, there's several lights down there. The nice, expensive lights, they had the top busted out of them, so that needs to be fixed. And I'd like to see some type of beautification project. I know the mayor, a while back, had looked at changing out the garbage cans, and that made a big difference, a big impact. I'd like for us to revisit and focus on doing what we can do currently with the spending that we've been allowed from insurance. And I know we're waiting on FEMA to tell us a figure on what big item projects we can move at, like the fishing pier. But there's a lot of small items that we need to focus on. And I don't think it's a lot of money. Right, right now, on the left-hand side of the bulkhead that the city owns, we just have just dirt. There's no grass. It used to be grass, pre-hurricane, I guess, but it's just sand. And there, there used to be two or three benches there that people could go down and sit and enjoy the marina side if they were fishing. Or on the other side, and sit down there, have a picnic. Almost all the benches are gone. So I'd like to see the city show the residents of the city, first and foremost, that we own Clifford Sims Park, we will always own that park. About every three or four months, someone brings up this rumor that the city is going to give away or sell the park. And St. Joe Corporation owns it. And I think if they see us actively improving it and spending some money on it, it will at least ease the mind of those that aren't caught up in the world of social media, and they believe everything someone posts. But that's what it was on the agenda for.
And Josh, for you, I guess, the gazebo at end to maybe look at, see what we, engineering-wise, as well as the fishing pier right at the restaurant. Now, we've talked about that, and everybody always says, well, you know, those pylons are, you know, just, we can't use those. I find that hard to believe, as strong and deep as those things are in the ground. Can you look at that and just see if there's any way we can use the existing pylons? I know maybe the crossing beams and members and all that, but, but... I know maybe the crossing beams and members and all that, but, but, uh, it's gonna be a major, major project if we have to pull those out and put new pylons down there.
Right, and I think we can assess some resources. I think the biggest thing is being able to vet, the same issue that you're talking about is if you had to take them out, is, is vetting to make sure that they're, you know, sufficient with all that riprap and stuff around them, so trying to figure out a way that we can clear them and say, hey, they're structurally sound.
Yeah.
Without having to major undertaking to remove all the riprap and stuff around it to do so is, is the challenge. I, I'm not saying that it can't be done, but I'll reach out to some resources and see if they're.
Yeah, that's just to me, I, it'd be so much easier and cheaper for us if we could use what's there, they've been there for, I don't know, but.
Before your time.
Way before my time and, and, uh, so, it'd be nice if we could use them, so I ask you to see what you think.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I want to agree with John because I moved into Avenue D in nineteen fifty-four.
Oh, is this on this?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And what happened when they were digging up and replaced the pipe, very interesting some of the stuff that came out of that ground. Uh, it's a broken number, uh, old pieces of concrete, and then right there in the front field that we're coming back to trip, you can see probably about five feet down, but water's constantly running. And, you know, I'm worried about the backfield, is that gonna cause a problem later on, you know, with packing that down and when they redoing the road? Because as a child, I've seen that road rise almost, uh, two feet since the time I was a little child. So, you know, when I saw them digging up the stuff, I saw concrete, uh, you know, like with pipe, they were spinning concrete, I saw old wood pieces that were broken up and so forth. So, when they backfill that back end, is that corrosion gonna cause a problem in the sanctuary later on?
It should, I mean, they're, they have specifications that they have to backfill, which are basically, you know, DFT standard specifications as far as the way they backfill and unpack, so, I mean, you should get a similar product when they backfill that stream.
So, when they, when they, when they re-surface the road or whatever, that, that area, it's gonna sink?
It should. And what John was actually talking about is milling, you know, potentially, if, if it's a candidate for milling, that's, you know, you'll basically come in and take a layer of asphalt off, which you actually won't actually rip all the asphalt up, so you'll actually be putting a coat of asphalt over existing asphalt, so you should have a much better product if you actually can mill and re-surface.
All right. Anybody got anything else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
All right, Mr. Clint, all you.
Several things on the agenda today, Mayor. Uh, the first one being on page five is the inter-local agreement between the city and the county with regarding the annexation of the property behind Public Works and the Public Works parcel itself. Um, it was quite the go-back-and-forth, but the county did acquiesce on the changes that I requested, and I recommend that we go ahead and vote on this.
Everybody have a chance? We covered that pretty good, I, I thought it was fair for both sides, so I'll entertain the motion to approve the inter-local agreement. Some of it, Mr. Mayor. Okay.
I'll second your discussion.
And, uh, Mr. Bass, group, you said for discussion?
I just have one question, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, in paragraph one of the now there forwards, uh, it says, suspend, terminate, any and all further legal challenges committed on the road of all by the county, and it's applicable in the city side as well. Are you comfortable that this only applies to those two parcels? And they're not gonna pull this out in the future and say, well, you.
Yes, this particular agreement applies only to those two parcels of property.
Second stands, Mayor.
Okay. One, one more.
Good, absolutely. Just, and I spoke to Mr. Ray back this morning, too, about this, and he said he just, he wants to get this thing resolved and let's move on.
Absolutely, so we're all, we're all going through that.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? All in favor, I, I oppose, same sign, most of the past five and O.
Excuse me, the next thing on the agenda is the engagement letter sent to us by, uh, Bryant, Miller and I with regards to us contracting bond counsel, dealing with, um, our creditors with regards to our water system. Um, I've, I've over, I went over the engagement letter and the proposal. It is standard, of course, it is expensive, but that's the nature of the beast. They have an estimation of somewhere between thirty and sixty thousand dollars to do this. Um, I will do everything that I can, um, and able to do to keep that cost down. Um, it's, you guys want to take this, look this over? If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and it's up to you to decide whether you want to adopt it or not.
Well, we need counsel, there's no doubt about it. Are we can terminate it at any time? Uh, and talking to Jim, who's been talking to you about what you guys are going to do at their recommendation that we do, uh, to me, it appears that it's just gonna be a whole lot less than, uh, even their lowest estimate, which is, to be in total, you know, I, I'd be shocked and surprised if we, we got to the thirty thousand dollar level. That's, uh, that's what, a hundred hours? That's a hundred hours.
Right out of.
That's a lot, that's a lot of time on, on this, and hopefully we'd, we'd never get to that point, but, but, uh, they have a specialty in, in this area, so, uh, I would hope that we would, uh, we pass a motion to utilize their specialty. Any questions? I do. Questions for Clint? So, you recommend, uh, that we both, what were they?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Mayor, I think we need to be clear to the city that we're spending this money potentially safe, it costs, and that's a whole lot more in the future. We'll be on top of this, because losing future customers could cause an increase in current water rates, and so we're trying to save that off.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, we, we think we've got a, uh, a, an agreement, inter-local agreement with the county, but, uh, we have to make sure, and so, uh, I think you're right.
Motion to approve.
Okay, the motion to approve the engagement letter from Bryant, Miller, and I, second for discussion.
I just, uh, I would read it, um, I said to my, three hundred and fifty, uh, and, um, he said, this is the, uh, Hollywood, this, from, and void reimbursement for actual costs incurred, such as photocopies, home, this telephone charge, travel expenses, overnight bill, travel expenses, reimbursement, property section, and, and, so, what he's saying is, um, this is not, uh, included with the color, but I would, all together, as far as photocopies, traveling, you got to travel and things like that.
That would be extra.
Hopefully, we can get to the thirty thousand, and the extra, uh, will be short, too, so I just want a good understanding, a better understanding of what, uh, reimbursement.
And barring us getting into any litigation, which we all hope that that never happens, we really shouldn't have to travel over here, I mean, I can drive to Tallahassee.
Commissioner, you got any comment?
Yeah, and, um, I mean, I agree with you on the, on the cost and travel, I mean, and they will bill for every single hour, because I've seen, seen it happen, but, uh, bottom line, I'm, I'm ready to save the residents' money, uh, going forward on this order. That's my bottom line, and, um, that's what I have.
Uh, Mr. Langston, your second stand, okay. Everybody got a good understanding about what we got going on? All in favor, I? Oppose, same sign, most of the past five and O. I'll sign it after the meeting and Jim can forward it on to them. All right.
Next thing on the agenda is, the last meeting, um, it was brought up about a local preference resolution for, um, bids, construction work and the like. Um, I was asked to look into it, and there are some local communities around here that have done away with their local preference. While it is technically legal, it does have a hint of impropriety, and it's basically a knee-jerk reaction to all the stuff that's happened in Lynn Haven. We haven't really used it that much. I think there's been a couple instances where we used it. It does tend to have the hint of impropriety. We've never used it in any appropriate way at all. We followed our, our resolution and the law, um, but it isn't technically legal, but there, it does, it could lead to some problems.
Okay. Any, got any comments?
I, I'll, I'll go first. I love to use local labor, you know, but it just gets you in a, seems like it gets you in a bind sometimes, when, especially when you got a bid so close, so tight, within a few dollars, you know, and, and it just, I, I, I'm, I'm all for, you know, doing away with local preference.
And this is only going forward, because I think we have one, just recently, I think Chris is here today.
Yeah, that'd be from here on out.
Yeah.
You have a discussion comment?
I'm curious as to where this came from, what was the mindset on, uh, creating it? It was done before my time, so I'm, I'm just wondering what the idea behind it was.
I, I'm.
Go ahead.
I really think, because a lot of the commissioners want to use local labor, a, a lot of cities, cities and counties have it in place still, but they're going away from it, uh, because you'll get rebuttal, lawsuits, things like that.
They keep the money here.
Yeah, there's a folks preparing someone.
I think Commissioner Larry's exactly right, there was a good, it was put in place with the good intentions on there, but now people are starting to really screw it up.
I don't think I was here at that time, sitting up here, so I, I can't, uh, I don't, two thousand seventeen, I think, but, I wouldn't have signed, but, uh, anyway, it was a pleasure to board. Two thousand seventeen, yeah.
Any other committee? I, I'm asked, anybody else? I honestly don't have a strong opinion or feeling either way, I think that there's good and bad about it, you know, but with this country becoming more and more litigious, I think it's best to take the safer route.
Well, and I think it's fair to point out, if it's less than ten thousand dollars, we don't have to get the bids, right? And I, I think that we still are committed to try our best to give those jobs, and I, I think we've done a good job in the past on, on projects that are less than ten thousand. Uh, we can still send a lot of work to our local vendors.
I, I think it's important that we, uh, we look out for our local contractors and vendors and remember that doing a unit also can, you know, spotlight on, uh, when you have friends, when you're doing certain things, and then you, you can give them to be a confidence support, and quote, and logo, uh, I think it is, it's time to just try to get away from it, and, uh, like, Commissioner, Houghman said, ten thousand dollars, you know, he did. We're not even happy with that, I mean, it's quite open. Um, um, can anybody, everybody hear me?
No.
What I'm saying was, I think that it's important that we support our local vendors, and, uh, we always will, but, uh, when we're dealing with something like this resolution, I think, um, it puts a spotlight on your specialty when you have friends, uh, in certain businesses, doing certain things, and people are saying, giving him that, uh, is, uh, because of who he is, so I think it's time to start easing away from it, and, uh, like Commissioner Houghman was saying, uh, with the, um, you know, anything ten thousand or less, you don't have to come from the board, we don't have to, um, uh, put a bid out for it, but I think it's important that we go ahead and move forward with, um, just, just clearing this.
Okay. Go ahead.
And Commissioner Langston said it right on cue with me, I mean, even last meeting, we had, uh, had this coming effect, and the two bidders were, they're friends of mine, you know, and, and they're, you, you run into the situation of, you know, this, uh, you've got an ordinance in place or a resolution in place, and, you know, what do you do? So, uh, I'm, I'm on board with.
Okay, all right, I'll need a motion to have that.
So, man.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Langston, second to, uh, um, go away with local preference resolution twenty seventeen dash oh nine, and, uh, any more discussion on that? All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, same sign, motion passed five O.
Next thing on the agenda, Mayor, is Resolution twenty twenty-one oh eight, and it's basically the, the city adopting the twenty twenty Gulf County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Okay, everybody understand what that's about, and I think, Jim, did you bring the, the, uh.
Yes, sir.
Plan?
We do, if anybody wants to peruse it, it's probably a hundred and something pages, I believe, is what we have. Um, staff is, I can't tell you, we looked at every page, we glanced through it, didn't see any improprieties in there. Basically, it's kind of a roadmap for natural disaster for the county and the city, so, uh, staff recommendations.
Okay. I want to take a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, motion by Commissioner Ashbrook. Second, I'll say it's the second, that's the higher. Any further discussion? And that's on file at the city, anytime anybody wants to pick it up and read it, uh, if it's available. No more discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, same sign, motion passed five and O. Okay, next.
All right, next on the agenda is, um, Resolution twenty-one oh nine, it was a handout, um, dealing with Gulf County local mitigation strategy. Guys, any questions?
I think, uh, we discussed that at the last meeting, and that's, uh, the, uh, the plan, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, that the county, uh, put out, it's got fifteen projects, and, and, uh, we had some questions about some of the, uh, the county's projects that they had listed there and will not get funding for down the road. Uh, I was not happy with it, nor, you know, and frankly, I said I'm not gonna sign it, but we talked with the head person in Tallahassee, a female, and, you know, you have to remember her name for me, but, but, you don't either.
I'll leave it.
But anyway, we told her and we, and we reiterated to her that we thought that, that, uh, backup water system was not appropriate using federal funds, uh, because our water system was not down for even twenty-four hours, and we, we talked to her about other, uh, plans the county had in there also. She basically said, you guys are gonna have to sign that, you know, it might affect your funding down the road. That's the long and short, read and digest version of what she said, so, so we've, I, I've got to sign it with, with your approval, so, uh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I got one question, and I, and I remember, I was just looking at one of, one of our projects, um, was it the lift stations? I'm, I'm guessing.
Evidence.
Um, it was like, close to last or last on the list, but I don't believe they're in, they're in any particular order.
No priority list.
Is that, did y'all ask that question?
No, I don't think so.
I think that actually, because it actually runs to the county, that, I'm not sure, I'll be honest with you.
It's probably done as selected, you know, as.
Maybe.
As needed.
And hopefully, uh, we got nine million dollars, uh, grant, and, uh, in there was lift stations, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we may not need that, but, uh, I'll hope, I hope we get a boat, that we, we got a place we can spend it.
Yes.
Uh, anyway, okay, entertain a motion to, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh nine, Gulf County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan. Gulf County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan. Okay, Mr. Ashbrook made the motion, there's second. Mr. Langston, second. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion passed five and oh.
That's all I had today, Mayor.
All right, sir, we thank you for that. Jumped around so much, I think we're in new business, the workforce housing project.
Yes, sir, Mayor, I think we covered most everything. At our last meeting, it was discussed about the workforce housing project. I believe it was Commissioner Ashbrook wanted us to put together an RFQ. We contacted Ray Grau, who done the planning for us on the, on the annexation and the large scale. Before you today, is an RFQ to consider to try to find a partner to help you out with that project.
That's all right. Be excited, Commissioner Ashbrook, I am.
Been a few years, man.
It's been interesting to see what kind of responsibility. We'll, we'll see, but, uh, I think, uh, we all know we need it, so let's see what happens. Any discussion on that?
I just, I just want to, yeah, I think Commissioner Ashbrook is working on some news, been his base for a while. Appreciate that.
I have one, uh, comment.
Okay.
Concern, I guess, that since we're gonna move forward with the idea, and, and I support the idea in general, I just wanna be clear that in my mind, we need to focus on an entrance and exit if this ever becomes a development. And I will only be in support of the project if the entrance and exit is compatible and has no negative impact on anyone's existing houses, roads, or blocks. So I just wanna mention that today because you're gonna hear me say that many, many times in the future, that we have to focus on not only their complex, how do you get to there and how do you leave there without disrupting other people's neighborhoods and streets. That's all I have.
I think, uh, I think that has been very important, what Commissioner Hoffman, um, said because we're going through it right now with Gateway and the residents in that area. The police are trying to control it, but they, they can't be there twenty-four seven. And it's important that we, uh, as, as commissioners, think about those that's already there and how it's gonna affect them before we, uh, before we even think about putting some in an area that's already a little population with homes. I think that's important, Mr. Hoffman.
I agree. I think you're right. I think we're learning a lot, still learning a lot from the Gateway complex. So, uh, we'll, uh, see what comes of this. And that's, I think, probably Commissioner Hoffman, probably all of our priorities is, is that entrance and exit situation. So, and of course, it's the counties too, when we talk about developing a property that starts. May we make everybody happy for once.
I, I, I agree, and I'd, I'd ask Jim to talk to Ray and make that one of the top priorities on that. In your secret situation.
I think, kind of looking at the progress, how this thing would come down, first thing is, I think what you're doing is trying to find a partner. Okay, getting somebody in, and then we're gonna have more likely to have some workshops and one-on-one time with that partner on there. How they envision it, show us these preliminary plans, then work towards a final plan. A lot of work to be done. This is just, this is step two in a long process.
I'll run, any motion for RFQ twenty twenty one dash oh one, workforce housing? Just a minute, I'm gonna get the motion second. Commissioner Ashbrook made the motion. Second. Second by Commissioner Hoffman. Okay, discussion, any more discussion from commissioners, anybody? Okay, come right up, Mr. Martin.
Anybody? First up, I had on workforce housing, that's, it's an update, is there an update on like Gateway to, uh, I know there was gonna be some housing, they were talking about one time on Avenue A, they, they lengthen, uh, you know, profit. An update.
Then this is, this plan mentions affordable and workforce, low income and, and low to moderate income. So, uh, my vision is, and I may be wrong, but reading the RFQ, my vision is a hybrid of both. Might, might have apartment complex, might have single family, you may have townhomes with six or eight in one complex. I, I just think, uh, it's, uh, what we're trying to do is, I don't take care of the, the low income, but the, but the moderate income are now, uh, living and can't find anywhere to live. Can't work here because they can't find anywhere to live. So it's catch twenty-two, so we're, hopefully, we'll get this going and, and provide a place for folks, uh, work in the hospitality industry, the waiters and the, you know, cooks and those type things. As, as well as, uh, find a policeman that might qualify, that the other qualify for the affordable. So I know Chief has had some that's, you know, can't find anywhere to live. So that's, we hope this will alleviate that problem. Any, anybody else? All right.
Those projects still on, on the book, you know, second phase of, are we asking about the apartment complex phase two?
Oh, you're talking about phase two? You weren't talking about this? Oh, good.
I thought they were, they're not, they, they.
They're not connected.
They're not connected.
Different, oh, different.
Whole different thing.
Yeah, and, uh, we've approved, uh, phase two of Gateway, shoot, at least. I haven't seen any activity out there whatsoever, so I don't know what's going on.
Because this, this is a totally.
Totally different. If you go, it's behind Public Works, our property behind Public Works, down Tenth Street, Humane Society and. Right back.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye? I, I, both, same sign, motion passed five and oh. All right, Jim, we'll turn that loose.
All right. Mayor, if you want me to cover the surface water plant, uh, Mr. McClain was out today. He did want to let you know disinfectant byproduct numbers, probably the best we've seen for the second quarter since the plant's been running. He had really, really good numbers, uh, for the second quarter. Generally, what you see is in the hot parts of the year, U numbers do increase on there, but he had really good numbers, so kudos to the guys.
And, and also, uh, Larry, he doesn't say much at the meeting, but he does a good bit of work in the background. He, uh, has had two experts, uh, opinions on us getting back to the surface water. And, uh, one of them's very extensive, the other one actually reviewed the first guy's, uh, report. And, uh, it, uh, it really wasn't favorable to do that. Not only expensive, but the water quality is, would not be the same. That's a real, real issue for that, so, uh, Jim, do you have that? Larry emailed you that?
Yes, sir.
Did, did he, everybody get that?
I went and saw it.
Okay.
I'll make sure everybody's got.
If you forward it to everybody, it's very, it's very good, very educational, actually, for me it was.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Did you, did you, you say going back to surf, you meant going back to the aquifer?
Yeah, see, I said surface, excuse me, I, I, I meant groundwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant, thank you.
I thought that the state had encouraged cities and counties and municipalities to get off the aquifer. And that was one of the reasons the city of St. Joe looked at making changes here.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is correct. So, uh, but, and there's mention of that in this, uh, in this email from, from this expert who's, who's got a couple of college degrees in chemistry and biology and so forth. So I, I felt like it's pretty, it's instinct rating, it's not complicated at all. Anyway, uh, but we jumped ahead of John, uh, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Your, your, uh.
Thanks, Mayor. Last meeting, we were discussing the city's stock grant. During that discussion, we talked about sewer repairs and things that were necessary for a free, one thing that we even thought about putting payment down. So you've got two projects scheduled in front of me and Philip Geralis and Walker. And First Street for its entirety would be two hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And for the court repairs, known repairs might be fifty-seven thousand. So those are the two options, and one would pass essentially to either completely fix the sewer on First Street, which is part of that ten million dollar grant that we have, that's fourth county, or fifty-seven thousand dollar patch.
How do you feel about the patch thing as far as, let's just say, go out five years after we spent our fifty-seven thousand? We get it paid, you feel five years later confident, five years ago?
Yeah. Because you can't predict this, I mean, Garrison Avenue is still falling.
Yeah.
We only know what we know today. You can't predict tomorrow, you know, joints and ends tomorrow, or pipe will crack.
So if we, if we can, if we can temporarily fix it, let's say for two years, we should have all that nine million dollar grant in place that we can completely fix it on our grant money instead of spending our money.
That's, that's the hope.
And keep in mind that we have to spend that paving money by December.
I hate to pave over any bad utilities, Mayor, we've all said it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
I know.
Boy, it's just throw money away.
And this, this First Street paving is gonna run from ninety-eight to Garrison, is that the complete?
Yep.
Even though, even that patch that's in front of CBS that we spent money on several years ago. That's, that was, that's part of this repair process. Is that a point of repair there?
There is a point of repair, yes.
Is that included in the fifty-seven?
Yes, there was six point repairs and a manhole that we all know is rampant. Yeah, that's part of this.
Yeah, and probably in order to better do this, because it's well over our bid threshold, what you gotta think about is, okay, you're looking at Long Avenue, potentially to do a change order with the Long Avenue contract you currently have, or you're going to bid it out, or you're going to say it's an, require that it's an emergency repair before you do the thing. Those are the kind of options we got.
So the two, the two sixty-one would be a bid item, the fifty-seven would be emergency repair?
You could do it. They're both over your bid threshold, Mayor, so you.
Oh, yeah, I know that, yeah.
We could, yeah, we could potentially do a change order with our current contract.
Current contract.
We'll just change over. Is this the current one?
Yes.
All right, I need, need some direction.
I think it needs to be fixed properly.
Yeah.
I'm tired of patches, though.
So we got some money to do.
If we spent our money, we'd, we'd be reimbursed with the grant.
I don't, I don't think we would, but look at what we do and cover, maybe we'll look for people somewhere else.
Right, okay, okay. So that grant money would be able to repair another area?
Right, we can extend potentially, you know, one street over, wherever that ten million stop.
Okay, okay, I'm fine with that, uh, because that's, in my mind, that's being reimbursed indirectly, so.
And another way you look at it to me is you're getting that road, the sewer, stormwater, I mean, stormwater fixed, and a road paved for two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. You're paving this grant. So it's still a pretty good deal, but, you know, we don't like to dip in there till too much, but still. So you guys need to tell them. Jim and John, what you want to?
Motion to approve the, uh, repair slash replacement at two sixty-one, six hundred and sixty-eight.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hoffman, second by Commissioner Ashbrook.
Aye.
To fix it.
Question, is this gonna be by change order, or how do you want to do it?
I would.
Or a merger repair?
I mean, you got, that's, that's an issue.
Yes, it is.
Sir. I think either one of suffice.
If you talk to the people, travel down First Street, get some emergency.
And, and what we're saying is, uh, L and K Contract Company would be the contract.
If that's the wishes of the board, yeah. I think you really can say it because if you go, that is sewer and we know it's leaking.
Okay, so your motion amended to.
Amended to, uh, considered.
Emergency emergency and, and awarded to the. L and K.
L and K.
Okay.
All the questions I have was how long, how long will they get to?
Don't know, we've got it, we'd have to get on the phone with them today. We're meeting with them Thursday on Long Avenue, so we will. I talked to DOT and they said that, yes, the contract is through December. But I told them the big thing was we've been trying to figure out when this big pot of money is gonna come in. They said they would work with us to, uh, a minimal change order or extension on there.
I'd just say if it was emergency repair, we need to get to it.
Absolutely, that's what we're gonna say today.
No, he may be customizing along the avenue anyways, so that's, that's a good deal, both sides. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion passed five and oh. All right, let's see here where we are. Mr. Kevin, go away, Fordy, you got anything else? Okay. All right, Kevin, you're up.
Yes, in, in my world, when we think about road repairs and sewer stuff, all that, all of these water coming in, we were a point seven MGD plant, when we jump up to five MGD day, five million gallons a day, anything we can do that'll keep that infiltration off of us, it's mighty well scare. So I appreciate all that y'all do as far as getting those kind of projects. Uh, as far as the plant goes, we're gonna shut down for June, so we're gonna pack the microtunes, everybody needs vacation, we're working a lot of hours. Almost three feet, we're getting, right? I love the three feet, we're three, almost three and a half feet of room, so we've got, you know, some room. We ordered ultrasound instructor, remember, years ago, we had six. Now we got one, it's, it's, it's a lot of times the power that old units were installed in, we got it in Thursday afternoons, we started this Friday in the middle of the game, supposed to cover all of it, and wow. And it's the one that cracks the inner wall of the algae cell, it got to the bottom, it's our most, that's what we're doing. I would expect a couple of weeks, we're seeing a little bit of results now, but we're gonna see a whole lot in a couple of weeks. Anyway, so that's, that's done, backing the rooms, that's the whole plan, you're the bugs on the bottom and ultrasound in the top. As far as keeping your algae at bay, you're always gonna have sonnet, it keeps it down, we don't smell it, so. We've been working on the cleanup part, you know, knock down the, some of the old building that's stopped and tore up. So we've got a little more cleanup to do, we're kind of, we're getting, we're trying to do as much in-house as we can. Getting some stuff hauled off, but it's gonna be one right next year, so we'll see, pile everything and get it. I think I probably won't be here next weekend, or next weekend, hopefully I'll be, I'm sure. That's my plan. But if you guys have anything to leave.
Between now and you going on vacation that week?
Uh, been on vacation, yeah.
You gonna be gone a week?
Uh, I'm gonna take off, I, I work on Monday, not next, I work next Monday, because I'm gonna take off Tuesday. Mondays are kind of busy, so I'll be there Monday, but then Tuesday through the weekend.
All right, guys, don't hurt that, but you got, Kevin, you got a week to get, to get, jump on it.
And that's all I've got, unless you got questions.
I'm fine, and you got a question? Okay, all right, Mr. Mike.
Uh, we had some really good numbers for our April sales tax, they came in today. Uh, and we saw a twenty-five percent increase in our sales tax for April, year over year, when compared to twenty twenty, nineteen, and eighteen.
What was that number?
It was fifty-four thousand dollars in total revenue from sales tax for the month of April, which we received in May, it's delayed. Uh, and those are usually numbers, that fifty-four amount is usually what we receive for a June or July. So it's a significant increase in our sales tax. for a June or July, so it's a significant increase in our sales tax for April.
Yeah, rental, rental, you get a thousand dollars a week, that's a lot, but, but Mike, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
A little bit, but what would, uh, one percent increase in sales tax bring for us?
Uh, I'd have to look at those numbers, uh, it's, yeah, the discretionary and the sales tax, both amount about three hundred thousand dollars a year for both of them, so six hundred K in total.
I think we boasted two oh eight or two ten for the one.
The one, one, one more percent sales tax.
But you heard the number here, that was, that was incredible.
Would generate what, twenty thousand dollars a month?
No, annually, two, no, about two hundred and ten thousand annually.
Two ten?
Annually.
And y'all know where I'm going with this, I mean, we need, we need some of these folks that are utilizing our roads and so forth, uh, to, to help, help pay for them, instead of putting it all on our citizens, so I've, I've been on this, been on my mind a long time, uh, so I'd like for you guys to, to think about that a little bit, uh, I think we're at seven percent now, it'd be eight percent, but, but I think it would, it would go over, uh, with our citizens, and I think it would go over with the county who has to approve it, in that it, it would take some pressure off our budget, annual budget, which in turn might help us stabilize water rates, which they've been, you know, and everybody wants stabilized, we're tired of increased water rates, so, so, uh, something I've been thinking about, we need to think about a little more, maybe.
We can come up with a calculation, a better estimate for you at the, for the next meeting.
That'd be great, that would be great.
Sales tax levy something that goes on a ballot initiative, or is that something that the government agencies just go on?
We may have to do a referendum, I think.
It's got to go through the county for sure, there's a process on there, we can't levy sales tax on our own.
But, but can they do it by, by motion or resolution, or we're going to have to have a countywide, uh, so, may have to.
Go back and look at your own.
But, I mean, we could, I think we could easily sell it to the citizens.
Oh, absolutely.
And then we could, we could earmark everything on that one, one, uh, one cent, one percent is for roads, we can say, we're only going to use it for roads, and structure dealing with roads, which indirectly we got to make sewer water, same difference, anyway, all right, what else?
That's all I had, Mr. Mike.
Okay, any more questions? All right, alrighty, let's skip on over to code enforcement. Anything, uh, that you know of, Jim?
He's working on a couple of future hearings, a couple, uh, I know we've had one over on Ninth Street that he's been working on, that got delayed, it's going to come back on, if you get any calls on that one, uh, Mr. Massey, uh, it's going to be rescheduled, and to share the neighbors that we're moving forward with that one. Uh, we have a couple of structures that are going to be coming down, they're scheduled for demo, uh, so those two will be coming down on Martin Luther King, uh, and if you need anything else, like I said, we've got a code enforcement officer there nearly every day now, too, working part-time, so if you need something.
Those issues, uh, Monument between Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street, that really needs to be.
The little yellow house.
It's, it's, it's nice, or it's not being used, I don't know if anybody's trying to transit living in there or what, but, uh, in pretty bad shape, that old two-story building behind there, it's just got tar paper on it, uh, it's, needs to be looked at.
Yes, sir, we've got.
One, one thing I get, I've got a couple of questions, questioning me about, you know, we're doing, we're tearing houses down and making big, or, you know, doing this, but we've got items on Reed Avenue, too, that are, that look pretty bad as well, and why are we tackling them, is what I'm getting questioned.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Michelle, I asked the same question this past week, the code enforcement, where we're at with those, one of them just sold again, so the, as a matter of fact, we did a lean search on it this past week, it used to be the old lodge, so that one sold again, so I asked code enforcement to reach out to those owners, because there's one, two, at least three, that subsstandard structures, that somebody needs to do something with, so I'll get with them again, yes.
Yep, I agree, just, just a question, what would, uh, drop this on my?
Uh, Miss Tisha Bell's, um, old house is one, and the other one is the barn there, that's right there in the, uh, between Avenue A and, and B.
Things are looking better in our city, but Reed Avenue looks great, to write about that, and then there's several others inside the monument.
Yeah.
Property there, but we, we're doing better.
Still got work to be done, I guess.
Okay, uh, anything else, code enforcement? All right, Mr. Jake, you got it, I don't know if we have time for it, but you got it.
Here we go. All right, this, this weekend, we started enforcing the boat ramp, uh, ordinance, and I think everything went pretty smooth, the first thing, Friday morning, they, it broke, the machine broke, and luckily, we had extra parts, Mike, uh, in his genius, ordered extra parts, so we got it backed up and running pretty quick. Uh, everything seemed to go smooth, we did write, including today, wrote eighteen citations, six of those citations were to locals, I think, uh, about four of them are in the city, the rest of them were in the county. Uh, I would say most of them were, uh, most of the citations were out of Tallahassee, and a couple Georgia, a couple Alabama, um, some of them were for not fan citation, a couple of them had, uh, some issues where they did not display the, uh, the receipt, and, uh, the locals were just no sticker, and just speaking of some of them, they called and complained about getting the citation, is, uh, they say they didn't know, they didn't know they were supposed to have a sticker. And going into research for this, I think we need to, uh, I, I've spoken to the judge, I've spoken to the clerk's office, and I think we need to revise our ordinance a little bit, uh, it's a little too vague, I actually went and stole the ordinance from, uh, Citrus County, uh, they have all their boat ramps on the Crystal River, Swan River, whatever it is down there, they're all, they charge their citizens fifty dollars per permit, uh, just so y'all know, y'all are not too high, their first fine for first violation is two hundred and fifty dollars, second violation is five hundred dollars. Uh, basically, this covers, I believe, all the local citations, we need to do something weird from this weekend, uh, our ordinance doesn't really cover it, our ordinance refers back to the original, uh, uh, what's this thing called?
Resolution.
Resolution, which says that county and city residents are free, it doesn't say they must have a sticker, uh, nothing in our ordinance says that, uh, stickers must be displayed, or receipts must be displayed, or anything like that, so I think we have to get real specific with our ordinance, and, uh, and the judge agrees, uh, the clerk's office, I called them, and talked to Miss Tina, who handles the tickets, and I did not know, but Miss Becky was calling, Miss Charlotte and Jill at the same time, doing the same thing I was doing, where we need to add some kind of, if the commission wishes, some kind of fee for people that do, if y'all are willing to, say, I write Scott a ticket to Mr. Hoffman, and he's a City of Saint Joe resident, he goes, gets a sticker, and brings it to the clerk's office, are we just going to drop the ticket, are we going to charge him a hundred and fifty dollars, or do we charge him a ten, fifteen dollar fee for us having to write him a ticket and remind him he needs a sticker? And do you want to do anything for out of county residents if they do that? I, I would, just my suggestion on that, and it, and it's your guys' decision, it's a hundred and fifty dollar ticket, if they went and spent the fifty dollars, charge them fifty dollar fee, and you made a hundred dollars, they get fifty dollars off if they decide to go get the sticker. That's just as much as I could think of. Uh, what else did Miss Becky say we needed on there?
I think that was the biggest thing, that would allow you some discretion to take care of some issues in there, if it's, if it's the wishes of the board, I think, Miss Charlotte's the one that actually spoke to her, but I believe that's what.
I think all you guys got this, uh, suggestion sheet here today, I'd like, uh, Chief to get with, uh, with Clint, and, uh, let's, uh, fine tune this ordinance, so we can, uh, and then bring it back to us, and, uh, and let us look over it, I, I like, like, just about everything, and of course, you, you're just going by, by experience already, problems we've had, and so it'd be nice to eliminate those, uh, those problems.
Yes, sir, uh, it, it's, it's my feeling, if you guys would give me permission, so I don't get in trouble to, uh, speak with the residents that got tickets this weekend, and let's, uh, let me encourage them, that if they go get their stickers, we'll drop, we'll void the citations that they got this weekend, because I really don't think at this point, it was even covered in the ordinance in the first place, uh, so, uh, there, everybody that has called the clerk's office, has requested hearing, and I'm pretty sure we would probably lose that hearing, just because we were so vague to begin with, and of course, it's, it's just a learning process, this is actually one of the first citation ordinances the City of Port St. Joe has ever had since modern times, I guess, probably since the, uh.
There's going to be some growing.
Yeah, and, and I think we all know this is going to be a marquee year as far as tourism, everything, as I see things that need to be changed in, as far as these old ordinances, some of them wrote in the sixties, you know, I'm going to bring those forward to Jim, to, to Clint, that we need to do some, some changes, you know, I mean, it, it's still illegal to throw rocks in the City of Port St. Joe, so.
Wow.
And I think that one was written in probably the fifty-three, sixty?
Yeah, it's, I know Panama City, uh, just had a charter review committee that met for almost a year, trying to get rid of some of the old stuff that, like, just like that, and bringing their ordinance up to, up to date, so, some point in time, uh, we might have to look at our charter and see, but anyway, uh, all right, I had a couple of things, and I agree with you on the, the residents, uh, getting a sticker, we, but we should have a length of time, you can't say, go get it, well, I didn't have time to go get it, give them thirty days to get a sticker, or, or fine, I, I'd like, you know, I can be specific about everything.
Yes, yes.
Every little old thing.
They're not allowed to use the ramp in the meantime?
Yeah, I mean, they're going, they're going, uh, you know, but they know now that we're serious about walking, now, I personally think that if you own a piece of property in the City of Port St. Joe, you should be able to get a sticker and not have to pay. Under our ordinance, it says residents, now, somebody might own a half, half million dollar house, and, and they paying city taxes, we're allowing county residents that don't pay anything in the city, and don't help do anything to maintain our boat ramp, we're allowing them, go, you're free, just get you a sticker. I'm not, I don't agree with that, but, but I, that's the way it is right now, but I'd like to us to think about, maybe changing, but we're, we've got some little animosity with the county now, so I just kind of wait a little bit on that, but, but, uh, I think it needs to be tweaked, the property owners, they're paying taxes to maintain that ramp, I don't think they should pay. You might live in Alabama, but you own a half million dollar second home down here, and they come down the weekend, and, and we're going to charge them to a bunch of bucks, I don't, I don't think that's right. When we allow county folks to use it free.
Yes, taxpayers' boat rent, if you're paying taxes, you can do it.
Taxpayer's boat ramp.
Yeah.
Well, one, one thing I think about, uh, we talked about this, stickers, I think about the beach driving permit, because I've, I've had a lot of experience listening to the county discuss it, discuss it over and over and over, and, and in that ordinance, I, I'm not sure if it, it's a five hundred dollar fine, or?
Big time?
Or a five hundred dollar permit, I believe.
For out of town.
For an out of, out of.
Three hundred.
Three hundred?
It was two fifty, and then it went up to three hundred.
Three hundred.
Okay, well, I'm not sure if it's the sheriff's discretion to allow, you know, them to, within the next thirty days or whatever, to go get one, or if it's written in there.
Talking to the clerk's office, if, if somebody gets a citation, and they go buy their permit, and take, you know, a citation is within thirty days, so if I write you a citation today, you have thirty days to take care of that citation, so if within that thirty days, you go get a permit, uh, the clerk's office told me that they do have, they will, uh, downsize that five hundred to a hundred, plus the cost of your permit, so, uh, they do have a plan to take a little bit, you know, four hundred dollars off of that ticket.
And then?
If you resolve the problem.
And then, just a little bit of rebuttal, um, if you're a resident in the, in the city, I mean, you pay the same amount as in the county, um, to drive on the beach, which is about thirty-two dollars, I think, or so.
Yeah, so a ci- a city resident has to buy a permit, a beach driving permit.
City, county.
Yeah.
Same cost.
But a county resident doesn't have to pay anything to use our facility, that's, that's kind of what, what I was getting at, they don't, they don't allow their residents to drive on the beach just by having a permit, they charge them, they're not going to have to pay, I guess that's what I'm saying, it's a little, little bit different, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just a little bit different, but everybody has to have a, they're treating county and city the same.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, I got you.
All right, also, uh, I got four bullet points here on this thing, sorry, guys, but, but we really do need to look at that ten dollar price, I, I've asked Mike to give me a, a net to the city, what we're netting, because we're paying the, the, uh, transaction fees to the MasterCard folks and the bank, and, uh, we getting eight dollars out of the ten dollars loan statement.
And, no, it's only five cents per transaction, for the credit card company.
How much?
A nickel.
How much are?
It's no fee from the bank.
I see. That's pretty good, it's usually like two and a half cents with a, with a minimum under, you know, ten dollars or under is a minimum and all that.
I'll look into it closer, but that's what, that's what May's number has indicated, and that's what I thought the contract agreement was.
Yeah, so double check that, that's mighty, mighty luck, but anyway, at some point in time, we're going to have to raise the rate more than ten dollars, because we got, we got to start thinking the way we can, uh, have more parking.
I, I thought it was out raised, but, uh, press nails is twenty-five.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
And people are going to blink and eye about paying it, if they get in there, so, so.
You got to be a Gulf County resident, I think, and then, or stay in there, and they change it up.
I, I told the mayor, uh, I actually went through and counted, if you take city property, and they park like they usually park, uh, a lawn bought sale, and around Fourth Street down, around the pond, and you take the bank property out, we can park about fifty-five boats, uh, trucks and boat trailers, and I've never counted it with, with the, the church, but at some point, either through the church, the church is probably going to sell that one day or something, we're going to lose it, so, uh, I don't know what we're going to do when that happens.
We, we need a plan for the future, we need to charge, we need to charge more, we really need it, uh, so, anyway, but in your, if you don't mind, put, if everybody agrees, we're going to have to vote on this ordinance anyway, put property owners, City of Port St. Joe property owners.
Property owners as opposed to pro- uh, opposed to residents.
Right, right.
Now.
Sorry, Clint. I, I kind of, I didn't think I could.
Here's, here's another, here's another thing that, that's going to get some folks riled up a little bit. But we've got at least half dozen or more charter boat captains that, that probably all of them are county residents. But the folks that are utilizing our, our facility down there for parking, if each one of those guys have, have three cars that come to fish with them, that's just eighteen, eighteen vehicles.
We're not charging anything for the...
We're not, and, and they, they're using, they're using our fish cleaning station. So, and if we charge them more, I mean, they're gonna pass it on to their, their customers. So, so there, we need to think about that.
Marine needs to charge them a thousand dollars a year.
So, so I'm, you know, I've heard thrown around two hundred dollars a year for a permit and, uh, for, for charter boats. So, I'm just throwing a lot of food for thought out there, guys.
They're doing business in city property.
That's correct. They're, they're, they're making money on free, free property, so. All right.
I will get with, uh, the city attorney about, uh, the, the revision for the ordinance. I just need you guys guidance and permission, if you wish me to do so, to, uh, fix these, uh, six tickets.
For city residents?
For, uh, residents.
You just, you just wanna, at, at this stage of the game, you just wanna allow them to get a sticker and then...
And void, void the citation.
I think, yeah. I don't have a problem with that, but I mean, how, how many times can we lead them to that water trough and they don't drink it?
And, and, and my only thing is, is it's just not, as we're sitting here, it's not covered in the...
Do you feel like it'd be thrown out?
You spoke to the judge?
Yes.
It sounds like to me from what you said, he probably is not, he's gonna throw them out. It wasn't specific to say they had that.
Cause, uh, the biggest thing is the referral back to two fourteen oh two resolution and that resolution says city and county residents launch for free.
Yeah, and it should say launch for free.
With a...
Following the requirements.
I just won't refer back to, I won't refer back to the resolution. I'll just be more specific to the ordinance, so.
And in this, I don't, I know y'all probably didn't have time to look at it, but, uh, you know, daily launch receipts must be displayed in driver's front window dash where it's clearly visible. We had one guy totally show up because he got a ticket, cause he wasn't displaying his, his, uh, receipt. Uh, and it also goes in here about the stickers. Your vehicle must have a sticker. If you don't want to pay the fee, then it must be displayed on the driver's side rear window permanently, cause we're running into a lot of people taping it up there so they can switch vehicles.
Or it's not theirs in the first place.
Exactly. They went and borrowed it from somebody. So it has to be attached to the window with the, with the new revision. I think I tr- I tried to cover everything except for what Ms. Becky wanted. And I think that's something that you guys, that's a decision y'all have to make as far as fees for, uh, people that get their problems fixed.
Chief, if they, even if they allow us to waive the, the fines on there, they're still gonna have to go down to the clerk's office and pay that filing fee on it.
No, because we have not submitted those citations.
That's, that's what I was trying to...
I've got five days to submit those to the clerk's. And I, I hung on to them until I could talk to you guys, cause I just felt like that some of it just wasn't right and I needed to do something about it.
Well, if, if...
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I'm actually happy to hear we only have six that we're dealing with. So I think that is indication that the city has done a very good job in notifying our residents what they need to do to get a free permit to launch their boat. Uh, now, I did have a suggestion and I'll, and I'll pass it along, that we should send out with our water bill, another notice and maybe ask the county, when they send out, I guess, their garbage bill or have the company who does their garbage send something out and, and talk about, you know, the requirement. I'd like to go ahead and set up a system and it may be when you come back with the finalized version, that would allow someone who failed to have the free permit and they got a citation, once they meet the requirement and prove that they're eligible for the permit, they would then have a much reduced fee. Because ultimately, we're just trying to get them to do what they gotta do to launch the boat for free.
Right. We just want a hundred percent compliance.
Yeah, so if we did reduce it down to just, uh, you know, twenty-five bucks to cover the expense of the paperwork and all, I'm fine with that. I think that'd be headed in the right direction. It, it'd be like, yeah, if a state trooper or traffic police pulled you over and you didn't have your driver's license or proof of insurance.
That's, that's ten dollars.
Yeah, you, you then go down and show, well, I had a driver's license, I had proof of insurance and you paid ten bucks. So I, I think that's probably in line with where we should go in the near future.
Yeah. And I, that's something in the future, we'll let the clerk's office handle because they handle citations. Just act with oversight from the city, uh, manager. I, I'd just like a special permission on this to handle it. And with permission from you guys, I won't have to worry about getting put in jail for fixing tickets.
That's psyched up me to use that word.
I, that, that's why I called the judge. I was like, how can I do this without going to jail? I, he talks, I, I just, if, if a ticket's wrong, it's wrong. And I just feel like some of these were wrong and we need to take care of it before it gets to the judge and it embarrasses us.
I agree.
But we don't have any tickets that were written. The other, uh, twelve that were non-county, non-city residents, those are as they stand.
And the only one questionable that, that's not covered is, is the guy that did not display his, his receipt. He got a ticket for not paying. By our rules that we all sit around and come up with, he's in violation, but...
I would say that's rather terrible.
As, as far as his attitude, I'll let the judge tear that one. So I think that was, that was not fun.
Well, I think we could put that one on the Noel Frost list.
Yes.
And also not file that ticket because I believe he will be dealing with...
I agree with that also.
It's superious.
Yeah, I, I think they'll take care of that issue.
I agree. But I, I'll put that in, I'll, I will call him and tell him the ticket's been, been drawn.
Oh, I'm gonna entertain a motion of that effect so Jake will be in the clear and everything. I'll entertain a motion of allowing the chief to, uh, to void the tickets that were written for, uh, city or county residents.
Several.
And the one out of...
One out of town.
Yeah. They had bought, you know, had a receipt.
Yes.
Okay. Then second. Most of them, Hopman, they're second. Second, wasn't real loud.
Okay. All right, anyone?
Like any comment? Oh, no, I'm good. It's okay, Terry, thanks.
Okay. Uh, I thought she wanted to vote him off, board him off.
Oh, well, no. Okay.
All right, any further discussion? I'm very high. I'm most, I'm fired up.
Just for the record, I had never avoided a ticket that I can remember. I just, then again, on, on the abundance of caution, I feel like, you know, some of these tickets were not covered in the ordinance. And we need to take a step back until we get it right.
I agree.
All right, Chief. That sounded good.
Thank you.
Clint, that, Clint did sound like...
I got it.
You got it.
We got it. With suggestions.
Miss Pierce, do you have anything?
Other than we're working with our grant writers, looking, still looking for opportunities, but everything's going well.
Very good, thank you. Now, we, we've met since we got the Centennial Grant and all that.
We have not received an award letter.
We haven't received the award letter, but we got notification that we got the grant for the Centennial Bill and grant for the Ford Theater and a grant for the Lighthouse.
But I'm waiting on our award letter.
That's enough. We're still waiting on that, but, uh, all indication it came not from the state. It was National Park Service, is that correct?
National Park Service threw, sent money through the state. They had to review it, but it's in the county has.
One question I have on the Lighthouse, was it, uh, of repainting and all that or is it what?
Repainting would be through the insurance, the FEMA money, but this is a separate grant from Hurricane Lee that we're talking about now. But we do have the money for repainting the actual structure.
What's, what was this actual grant for on the Lighthouse?
It's through the National Park Service, Hurricane Michael Repair and Prevention in the Future.
Okay.
Just like the Centennial Bill.
How we, however we wanna use it on the building?
There are some limitations. We have a budget and what we're going to do.
Okay.
But yes, sir, I have it if you'd like to look at it.
Like, like displayed the lens and that type of...
They will not cover displaying that, but getting the building ready.
So you could display it?
We could. The county is still holding some funds that they have committed to us for that.
Okay.
But this was like your buildings, your windows, different things there, air conditioning generator, things of that nature.
I was just asking about that.
Yes, sir.
Was telling everybody how grateful we were. You know, all through, absolutely.
Yes, sir. Very much so. If there are no other questions, that's all I have.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, citizens, be heard. Come on up. Anybody? Armin, we got him early in the meeting. That's Chester, that's, you good? Okay. Uh, commissioner items, uh, for discussion, uh, start with, uh, Commissioner Hopman today.
I have a couple. Uh, one is a question, did we ever get the shade put over, uh, the machine you pay? Uh, we talked about...
Uh, we adapted and put a, a, uh, shade, a flange over the, uh, screen itself.
Okay, so is that all we need?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they said the sun will dry run the...
Right, I wanna make sure we're protecting that.
And we put a, uh, a sun flange over that.
Okay, okay. Uh, the other item is, a- a- as far as Gateway Apartments, I've had several, uh, residents call me and, and complain about the increase in the monthly, uh, charge for an apartment. And, and if the information I received was accurate, it is substantially increased. And I've never really been clear as to what role, if any, the city of St. Joe has with the Gateway Apartments. So I would like to invite the gentlemen that have come here before, I believe it's the owners of Gateway. I'd like them to be on the agenda and invite them to come and, and explain to me, uh, why the increase was so substantial. And I, I, and then I'll, I'll tell you what, I also hear on the street, and it may be just absolutely false, but there's talk that there was some money that came up missing from one of the previous managers or office health.
Correct.
Uh, a lot of money, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. So people are questioning, are, is Gateway Apartments trying to recoup the money that this person was supposed to have stolen? And I don't know the answers to those questions, but I, I think the city should have an explanation as to the increase, uh, in, in my mind, from what I've read, you know, those prices are set based on HUD rules and based on the, uh, average salary of a community and, and that's looked at every so often. But I'd like to invite them, uh, if for no other reason than to, at least the city will have answers to the questions of why the price for a one, two and three bedroom has almost tripled. So anyway, that's that. And then the other thing is...
Why, why are you on that real quick? You know, we had the manager of the complex and it wasn't Royal American anymore, it's somebody else. You know, they came here, cause folks were complaining about they were getting eviction notices, we called them, weren't paying the water, water bill.
Right.
And, and so hopefully we got to pass that. I don't know, but, but, uh, there are issues out there.
Right. And I wanna be assured prior to voting on this company's, uh, you know, we, we've said we support phase two, but we have not voted on and approved an actual plan of phase two. So if I hear that they're going crazy on these, uh, price for rent, then they don't need to be a phase two. I'll vote against it, so.
I believe, I may be mistaken, I believe a development order's already been approved for phase two. They just still gotta get a building permit.
Right, they don't have a building permit. So we still have a few cards in our hands. And, and I want them to be here and at least explain what's going on out there. There's something, something's not right currently. The only other thing I have, um, is, you know, we've been talking about MLK corridor and focusing on MLK. The other day I rode my bike down there and happened to stop at the lot that has become the gathering place there off of MLK. We, we discussed, I believe, even at one point approaching the owner of the lot to buy that, the city purchased it, make a little park and stuff for it. But it's turned into something that's, I don't think, uh, supported by the community. The smell was so bad, when I was sitting on my bicycle, I had to tell a guy, I got to move because I think the fact that the lot is being used as a, as a restroom and it was, it was bad, so. Well, we, we've got to encourage code enforcement to look at what can we do? We got sofas sitting there and, and I'm all for people gathering and having a good time and, and that's not what's going on. I, I think that, that we've gotta look at that and see if we can make some adjustments today.
Yeah, so Commissioner Langston and I, I think at one time approached property owner about us buying that property, uh, we need to do that again, but they were, we're talking about some kind of lease arrangement, but I think we'd rather try to buy it and make a park than, than unless it's a, you know, under your lease for a number of dollars a year. But it would be in their favor for sure if we wanted to do that. So anyway, Chester got...
I understand that. You, you're correct in your assessments of that. But one hour we developed the thing was to have a pocket park away from Martin Luther King. We've had such things that, uh, that's, that's in our plan. We haven't been able to purchase a, a lot also of that area so we can do that. So that's part of our plan to, to, uh, have a pocket park so that we can move those sites off of Martin.
Would, would they, would they move? Cause they've only moved from one side of Martin Luther King to the other, other side. So if we had a pocket park off Martin Luther King, would the individuals that like to gather, would they use the pocket park or would they still gather where they've always gathered?
We're hoping that it would be enforced based upon how the pocket parks be set up. We, we're hoping that. Uh, we talked to, uh, Commissioner Aaron about that earlier. And we talked to, just pardon having a property somewhere close enough so that they're...
And the only, I mean, the property owner is definitely liable for anything that happens. If there were any kind of violence, he'd be liable. So his only, he could put, you know, absolutely no trespassing signs and then, and then Jake and his guys could enforce it. So, so, uh, I would certainly pass that on to Mr. Langston, the, the property owners and see if they would think about that a little bit. Anyway, anything?
The only other item I had, I wanted to congratulate the mayor and the other two commissioners that, uh, will be here for at least two more years and, and I look forward to working with all three of them.
And I echo that, of course. Thank you, sir. Uh, only a couple of things. I've got, um, the nineteenth street bridges. Anything to do on that?
You know, I, I spoke to the contractor last week and assured me someone would be there for me after I'm born. It hasn't happened yet, so he gets a photo later.
So the bridges are ready, but we don't have the foundations.
Um, and the last thing, and I really hate to bring this up, but, uh, Willie Mae Williams' property with the trailer, um, I didn't see it on the agenda or anything.
Yes, sir. It's actually going to the planning board today and then it'd be on the next meeting.
So, all right.
I'm glad we're, uh, married to women good news. I saw some activity at the bakery in Reed, they're finishing up plumbing today. So it looks like they may be opening soon against the stoppage order.
They're already producing some stuff. Yeah. I knew somebody bought a gate about two weeks ago. They may not have had a permit, but somebody bought a gate from...
I think she does some stuff out of her house.
She did that before she bought braces.
Uh, okay, gotcha. The bad news is Taco Bell, uh, guy that's gonna be starting here, is looking for a place for his contractor to live if anyone has a, what he calls affordable place to rent for the next six weekends.
I, I was told that they, uh, the Taco Bell thing, their property was for sale.
No, that's still, he's looking for a place for his contractor, and he just texted me before this meeting.
Okay.
Well, that's good to hear.
Please, please. All right, so I have anything? Okay, Commissioner Langston.
I, I have a few things, uh, first of all, uh, I wanna talk about the Gateway situation. When they were trying to, um, we were arguing about the roads and, and the traffic. And they wanted to come in and do phase two. And we bought, um, the, the, the Pacers Foundation people in, and bought the, um, bought the, um, managers in, and the Pacers Foundation were throwing it up on the manager saying that they didn't have anything to do with management, all they do is hire the management company and look back and forth. And now, uh, the situation is rising, which I was trying to tell everybody then, that there was something wrong, you know? There was something going on, I had to get a phone call then, so. Right now, since, and if we can do anything to try to help, uh, change the atmosphere and what's going on over there at Gateway, uh, we, that's the new mission, is we need to concentrate on that. I don't know what else we can do, but I, I, I think that we can do something to try to, try to help out those people that's living there that want to live there. Secondly, uh, the, uh, lights under the ba- not the bathroom, but the, uh, outside competing basketball, they, they continuing to leave them on at night. Uh, I think we need to put a lock on, or either, uh, put a timer on where they'll, they'll go off automatically. Because if we don't, the bill is gonna be out of range. I don't know if the kids doing it, or who's doing it, but they leaving the, uh, lights on. And we had to go out, I had to go out the other day, other night, and turn them off myself. Uh, we need to, um, think about that, and also, um, the, uh, garden, or the community garden, electricity, will we get that fixed? What about the pump? Okay, so we ready to go there, we ready to go. Okay, um, I had a meeting with the, the ladies for the community garden, um, I wanna thank Commissioner Hoffman for, uh, helping us a little bit, getting involved, uh, a little more with it, and, um, uh, I think we have a good, good group of women, which we always have. Um, Wednesday we'll be out, uh, nine o'clock in the morning. I guess they want us to measure off the, map, map the area and measure off the boxes and start getting, getting started on that. And Saturday they come up with, come up with this idea of, of community garden party. So they're gonna invite everybody, uh, to the community garden from nine o'clock to two, to help clean up, bring your tools with you. And also, uh, Sunday at two o'clock, they'll be back. So, um, let's come together and rally as a community and make this, uh, community garden success.
Say that again, that day, this Saturday?
This Saturday, uh.
Nine to two?
Nine to two.
Okay. Bring your gloves and your rain.
Makes you.
That's good.
Utensils, whatever you, whatever you need to, um, help us out. And, um, last but not least is, uh, the, uh, the gazebo at Peters Park, um, by the, uh, museum. Uh, we need to, um, see what we can fix down, whatever we can. Oh, and they, um, the stripes on Dr. David Nasty Drive, the yellow stripes that go down the middle of the drive, we may need to start paying more attention to that because they are all on the other side of the road. You can't, I mean, we have common sense to know when you go on one way, you're on the right side, and when you're on the other way, you're on the left side. But some people just need some guidance. So maybe we need to get the stripes down the road right there, uh, you know?
It's up a lot.
We just see it, that's all I have.
Okay. I'm gonna go back on your paces, uh, Commissioner Langston and, uh, Commissioner Hoffman. I think the one provisions on, on, uh, allowing that second phase to go forward, that they're gonna have to fix that entrance first, divert that traffic and all that. So, in my mind, if they don't fix that, they don't get to fix the back. They gotta fix that first.
Oh, I, I think that was the agreement.
That was the agreement, so, so we got reminded of that, we need to. Uh, and your, and your lights, uh, the, uh, a, a lot of, uh, of storage units, climate-controlled storage units, they have a dial in there that you can dial up an hour's worth of, of light while you're working. If you work over an hour, you just go back and dial it back again. But we can have install there, and there's no way that you can make it stay on. You, I mean, you may end up breaking it, but they, they make these timers that instead of, you know, off it, well, we, we can, we can install something that says it's only on from, from dark till midnight if we wanted to, but, but I just thought about the dial system. It might, uh, cause if they leave it on when they leave, it's gonna turn off in a little while. So, or we could set a time limit that, with a timer that it automatically go off. What time? At night. Late? At night, afternoon, late. But.
I, I don't think anybody has, uh, people's out there at the club to meet them. Play basketball this morning.
Yeah. And, and it wouldn't be used ever. You could single. If you have to buy ten, ten. Right, so you'd be better with a little dial. Okay, dial, did you get, uh, our electrician maybe to get into that?
I think it's kinda like the basketball court versus the baseball fields. I think, uh, several of us have had to go out and turn the lights off at midnight.
Right.
Not since Willie moved that.
Not since Willie moved.
Willie moved.
Okay, uh, last, next last thing I've got is, uh, I've asked Jim to, um, to resurrect our finance committee. I read in the Panama City Paper last week where they refinanced their, their big loan from three point two one down to zero point nine percent through, through Regions. So, we got a little money in the bank. If we, you know, sweeten it up a little bit, and say we were able to put this much down, what can you do for us? We're currently at two point four one or two point four something.
I believe that's correct.
And, uh, if we can get it down to one percent or something, that would save us a lot of money. I think it'd save Panama City six, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars over the life of the loan. So, I mean, there's another place that we can stabilize water rates by reducing our.
So, not too long ago, you were able to reduce our local loan just by mentioning we were going.
No, we increased, we increased the rate on the money market from point two to point three or something.
And they got word that we were talking about it.
Changing banks. So Jim reached out to Regions, he told them what we wanted to do for them to get packaged together. He got Mike McKenzie and Greg Johnson, and Mike Lacour, and Ralph Robertson, and Jim. A nice mix of, of financial folks that can deal with, with those big money guys. So, I think Ralph Sealon's probably the one.
He was on the original one.
Yeah.
The last time was just through Regions Bank.
Okay. Uh, anyway, uh, last thing is, uh, like I said earlier, I'm excited about next two years. When you guys and all of us get along together like we've been doing, uh, we can get a lot done with the city. So I look forward to working with everybody in your staff, everybody public. So, uh, for that being said, uh, we'll stand.